Pledge allegiance led by Councilor Sacco.
Thank you. If anybody, everybody would like to stand and face the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unafraid, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
That brings us to announce, sorry. That brings us to announcements. First announcement is a new employee introduction of Lindsay Nations Chief Pickering. I got it right this time. You got promoted.
All right.
Yeah.
One day.
Everybody does.
Yeah.
Mayor Boobinick, members of the council, good evening. My name is Greg Pickering. I am the chief police here in Twalton. It is my pleasure tonight to introduce you to the newest member of the police department, Lindsay Nations. Lindsay is our new police services technician, and she started with us on October 31st. She comes to us from the Washington County Sheriff's Office where she brought eight years of experience. She brings a ton of knowledge and skill and abilities as a record technician, and we're very excited to have her with us now. So as a police services technician, she'll be working in our records division, handling data entry, processing police reports, and assisting officers with their daily assignments. So I ask that you please join me in welcoming Lindsay to the city of Twalton.
Welcome.
Welcome. Glad to have you here.
So you came from the sheriff's department?
I did.
But I know I've heard from chief in the past that that's a pretty demanding job you're going into, that it's pretty busy, lot of work, you got strict deadlines, so want to welcome you. Want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
I'm a resident of Washington County, out in Aloha, Reedville. I have a twin sister. I've played softball for 30 plus years, and I love my court.
All right.
Excellent.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, and I also, I'll invite up Captain Jeremy Rankin. So as you know, with my promotion, that left a vacancy in the administration at the rank of captain. And I'm pleased to announce that after an internal process, we selected Jeremy Rankin as the next captain for the Twalton Police Department. So Captain Rankin was also promoted on October 31st, and he will serve as our services captain. He'll oversee our investigations division, our school resource officers, and our records department. Jeremy brings 20 years of law enforcement experience, 15 of those years here in Twalton. He also brings a ton of knowledge and skills and abilities to the department, so I would ask that you help in congratulating Jeremy on his promotion to captain.
Well, congratulations. I can remember two different change, you know, two promotions. Yeah, I know you've been with the city quite a long time. We've interacted a lot. I think both of us know Officer Rankin or now Captain Rankin. But congratulations. Looking forward to working with you, and I guess you're gonna have to put up with Brian Struckmeyer a little bit more now. Yeah, all right. Cool. Well, thank you, and thank you for your service. Thank you for protecting us all these years. And like I said, look forward to working with you, and maybe one day you'll be sitting in his seat. Thank you for coming today. But want to say anything?
I'm just, I'm also, I just want to say I'm also a resident of Twalton. I lived here for 11 years, so it's in the community and appreciate the community offers and love with me here.
Well, thank you again and congratulations.
Congratulations. Glad to be with you with us. That's great.
All right, that brings us up to our Small Business Saturday proclamation. Annalia and Susan, why not? You're like, what? So Small Business Saturday is a very special event that started several years ago. We all know about, you know, Black Friday and all that good stuff, the sales after Christmas, after Thanksgiving. But this is something to help out our small businesses in the Twalton area. And I think, Emily, have you ever formally introduced yourself to city council yet? This is Annalia Jackson. She's the new chamber CEO. Go ahead and introduce yourself to the council, then we'll get to the proclamation.
Well, I'm Annalia Jackson. I was hired in April and came into the chamber after quite a traumatic few years that the chamber went through between COVID and other transitions. So got in and rolled my sleeves up and started looking at what it needed to serve the businesses in Twalton now, post-COVID. Post-COVID, it's a very different world, and one of the things that I was shocked to discover is we had sent out a survey and learned that though they really love the networking and the community outreach that chamber provides, they were really frantic about retaining employees, recruiting employees, innovative internships, culture. So our chamber has three priorities coming up, and they all revolve around the results of that survey. The first priority is workforce development, so we are working with hashtag work ready with Chris Llewellyn to expand that program into a true year-round internship program for high school students. We are also creating very high-level seminars at the Pirlo Building, sixth next year. And then we are also doing free lunch and learns for all businesses, members or not. And then we're also going, thanks to the city, we are receiving some ARPA dollars, and we will be recreating the BRC and helping businesses get some more training and some more assistance post-COVID. So our first priority is workforce development. Second is government and business advocacy. And we discovered that a lot of our citizens and businesses didn't know anything about the tolling issue, and that that was really going to hurt Twalton because most of our employees commute in on a freeway. So we put up a website called Oregon Tolling Updates, and we launch it and publish it fresh every week with the latest articles and information about the tolling plans. And so that second priority is business advocacy, and the third is to increase our networking. So we are very happy with our businesses and really want to promote them, support them, strengthen them, do whatever we can to help them recover from the last few years.
I see beside you is?
This is my board president, and she's been my right arm. She's just been with me, helping me learn the history of Twalton. She's been wonderful recreating the Business Advocacy Council. She is responsible for recruiting our new board. So what you're looking at with chamber is a whole new chamber than the one that you knew a few years ago. Completely new board of wonderful people. In fact, there's an ad in the Twalton Life this month with their picture, including Mayor Frank. And, and so new board, new CEO, new chamber.
Tell us a little bit about Small Business Saturday.
Small Business Saturday is the Saturday after Thanksgiving, and so it's kind of the counter to Black Friday. It's asking the citizens to shop local and really give some thought to getting out into the community and supporting the businesses that are here in the city of Twalton.
With that, council, press, and read the proclamation?
Proclamation declaring November 26, 2022, is Small Business Saturday. Whereas the city of Twalton, Oregon celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there were 31.7 million small businesses in the United States representing 99.9% of all firms with paid employees and are responsible for 65.1% of new jobs created from two, it says 2020, oh, 202019. I did correctly. And whereas 96% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agree that shopping at small, independently-owned businesses supports their commitment to making purchases that have a positive social, economic, and environmental impact. And 97% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agree that small businesses are essential to their community. And whereas the city of Twalton also recognizes the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic has had on our small businesses and those they employ, and dedicated 1.2 million to our local economic recovery efforts in 2020 and 2021. And whereas consumers have also continued to support locally-owned businesses during COVID-19, with 86% of Americans spending almost $100 a week at local businesses, a 16% increase before the crisis with a record of $19.8 billion in 2020. And whereas Twalton, Oregon strongly supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed a Saturday after Thanksgiving as small business Saturday. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Twalton does hereby proclaim November 26, 2022, a Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Introduced and adopted this 14th day of November, 2022.
Anything else you'd like to say?
All due support.
Coming tonight? Sure. I said no, you're still fair to do it anyway.
What I want to, I want to reiterate, I've been a member of the chamber through Meals on Wheels people for over 10 years and on the board for six. And so I've got pretty hands-on and entrenched in the chamber and loyal to our business community. I think one thing the community might not know is the really valuable partnership that the chamber and the city enjoy together and support each other and share information and share ideas. You all, the city is always forthcoming and keep us up to date and aware of what's going on. And we try, we do the same to the city if there's an issue. And I think that's an important part of our whole community, to know that we all work together on things, whatever the issue is. You know, we, we're the Parks Bond. We're all working on tolling together. We support how our community lives in traffic, all the, all the issues you all deal with, we deal with too on the business side. So I just think it's really important to know that the community knows that we're all in this together. And I just have to say this aside, because Annalia won't tell you this, but since she came on board in April, and the honeymoon was over a long time ago because she hit the ground running, and our chamber looks really different pre, since pre-COVID. Annalia's brought programs that are innovative and new to the chamber and to our community and to our business community. And we're all, the board and the, and the members are excited about this because we heard what they had to say, and we heard what their needs are, and thanks to Annalia, we're, we are being proactive and getting things done. 2023 is going to be a big year, and we're gonna just keep supporting our business community, which supports all of us.
Thank you.
Welcome. Well, thank you both for coming tonight. All right, that brings us to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the council regarding an item that's not on tonight's agenda. Those folks who feel that a slip, it looks like these are all folks who want to talk about something that's on the agenda. But public comment is for things that are not on the agenda tonight. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone here in the meeting or in Zoom who would like to address the council, this would be the appropriate time. You don't have to be signed up. On Zoom. All right. That brings us. Yeah, the folks who have signed up for item G1, we will listen, we will hear you in a little bit.
Yeah, when we get to that.
That brings us to the consent agenda. These items are considered routine, will be adopted by one motion unless someone at council would like them removed or heard separately later tonight, and that the agenda, the consent agenda consists of, of course, you just scrolled weird. There we go. Six items. Item number one, consideration of approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of October 10th and 24th, 2022. Item two, consideration of resolution number 5651-22, authorizing the city manager to execute an encroachment agreement for the private encroachment of city public utility easement on 19551 Southwest 56th Court. Item three, consideration of resolution number 5656-22, authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with the Northwest Geo-Tech consultants, Inc. for materials testing and inspection services for the city's capital projects and for private development. Item number four is consideration of resolution number 5657-22, authorizing the city manager to execute deeds granted in easement to PGE for utilities associated with the EV charging infrastructure at Twalton City Services Site at 10699 Southwest Herman Road. Item five is consideration of approval of a change in liquor license application for Baja Fresh. And finally, item number six is consideration of approval for new liquor license for Fiasco Enterprises. Would any council like an item removed from consent?
No, but I would like to recuse myself from voting on all of the consent agenda because one of them is personal.
I move that we adopt the consent agendas read. Okay.
I have a motion and second to adopt the consent agenda as read, and discussions on the motion. Hold the favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Recuse.
Recuse, abstain?
Thank you.
All right.
This is a small community. Everybody's your neighbor, so you just want to double check.
That brings us to our first public hearing. Consideration of ordinance number 1471-22, making certain determination in finance relating to and approving the core area and reinvestment area plan known as CORA and directing the notice of approval to be published.
Good evening. Good evening, mayor, members of council. My name is Jonathan Taylor. I'm the Economic Development Manager for the city of Twalton. Tonight, I'm joined with our consultant Elaine Howard of Elaine Howard Consulting. She has been our urban renewal consultant since 2019. Tonight, before you, you have the culmination of five years' worth of work that many of you have participated in since 2019. Tonight, we are proposing the consideration of ordinance 1471 about the adoption of the Core Opportunity and Reinvestment Area Plan. For those that are watching this as a public hearing, so after we are done with our presentation, we turn it over to council for public input, for those that are both for and or against. But really what this is, is this has been a multi-year endeavor to securely position our community for long-term economic prosperity. COVID-19 proved a dramatic change in how we approach economic prosperity, and so that pandemic has further prioritized these efforts. Since 2018, the community has done Twalton 2040 in our housing production strategy, and we understood with continued community growth, development constraints present continued challenges. We identified both through the economic opportunities analysis and the housing needs analysis that we are deficient in land, but I think everyone knows that. But we figured out how much we were deficient. And as more development occurs, transportation infrastructure is limited or severely restricted, and due to the pandemic, as well as the advent of electronic commerce, we're noticing current supply chain issues are presenting opportunities and challenges for both commercial and also land use. So what will be produced tonight, and then on November 28th for the consideration of final adoption, is an actual plan document that identifies financing and the projects developed. A brief background, we started this in 2018 with the Twalton 2040 project. That was a 40-year look at land supply, both for economic lands and residential land. In 2019, we launched our education series because council from the HNA and EOA decided that we need to do something that doesn't burden just the general fund and also doesn't continually burden the public with levies and bond option. So we did an education series. There were four of those, but then we also officially closed our prior urban renewal area curd, but it had stopped collecting tax increment in 2010. So it was just kind of administrative cleanup. In 2020, we didn't expect the pandemic, but we also launched the feasibility studies for two areas, Basalt Creek and the Core Opportunity Area. 2021, council approved the Leventon Plan Text Amendment, which was to expand Herman Road, which will begin next year, but also District 2 Visioning and also District 1 Plan Adoption. So we adopted Basalt Creek that had dedicated $53 million in non-tax, non-new tax revenue to just infrastructure, water, sewer, and roads. And then this year, this is the culmination of District 2, which is now the Core Opportunity and Reinvestment Area. Through, since 2019, council has identified six values that they wanted to make sure that we incorporated into this plan document. More housing, number one. Due to the COVID-19 and those that survived, just for another public accolade for this city council, you use non-tax increment funds, which this will also derive over the next 30 years, of providing economic stabilization to our small businesses of $1.2 million. And through that effort, 95 of those businesses are still in operation today. So based on that, you prioritize leave no existing business behind. So those that survived the COVID-19 pandemic and also the current economic challenges from inflation and supply chain and workforce, we don't want any of these efforts to deplace those businesses or to make life for them harder. This is the number one issue in the community, and that's connectivity. So you wanted to prioritize enhanced connectivity in this area. And then something we've heard since 2019 from everything both outside of council and also inside the city is to foster, create, and promote some sort of community identity. And the next, obviously, the HNA and EOA identified this, and that's maintain, grow existing employment lands. And then we want to ensure that whatever we do, everyone shares in the blessing and economic prosperity. Through that, through that, we have eight priorities: small business assistance, land acquisition, housing, developer assistance. Oh, I was just reading the bottom.
Okay, gotcha.
Community identity, environmental stewardship, blight remediation, and transportation. When we get to the proposed boundary area, you'll understand why we've done this, but why did we focus on these areas? Well, council and our civic engagement groups identified focus on keeping future redevelopment near major transportation modes. And this is to prevent further sprawl of auxiliary traffic into residential areas. So if we can keep future development along I-5 and Twalton Sherwood Road, we can prevent or at least mitigate some of these growing traffic concerns. Enhanced current employment lands, also to prepare for regional transportation projects. We have a county project coming along that's the widening of Twalton Sherwood Road, but also at the present time, we were planning for the Southwest corridor. Remedy environmental issues that affect certain areas, i.e. flooding. These atmospheric rivers that we continually get, the impervial surfaces, prevent some of the water flow, and so try to prevent some flooding. Enhance connectivity, fund major infrastructure projects for future growth, and then also based on previous community needs and desires. So the vision for the Core Opportunity and Reinvestment Area, or CORA, is a guiding document in our community's sustainable efforts to strengthen the social, cultural, environmental, and economic vitality of central Twalton by funding projects that improve property values, eliminate existing and future blight, and create an active civic core. So with the modifications based on the recommendations of our working group, which were 12 members, we have also presented to all four major taxing districts, Washington County Board of Commissioners, Plaquemines County Board of Commissioners, Twalton Valley Fire and Rescue, and the Twalton, Tiger Twalton School District. And this is the recommended boundary that is being proposed. It is a 42% reduction from the original boundary, and it's also a drastic 32% reduction in our maximum indebtedness. The only changes that were initiated was the elimination of Bridgeport Village, and this is at the recommendation of not only city of Twalton, but the other three taxing districts as well. The industrial areas near Dix and Safeway, the removal of RV, the RV Park of Portland site, but the addition of the rights of way of Herman Road and Twalton Road, Martin Ozzy, and 65th Avenue with the public rights of way right through here for proposed trail development. And I won't, since this is the fourth presentation, I'll just briefly run through these, and if there's public questions or comments, we can answer those questions. But there are nine goals. Goal one is blight remediation. And one thing that I want to point out is two things. Council has identified that blight for us is any vacant or storefront that's been vacant or blighted for more than five years. So this is not some effort of property speculation or anything. This is council's priority of focusing on properties that have been historically blighted. Secondly, council has also indicated, which is in this plan document, that eminent domain will not be used for any proposed or future development. Focus on dilapidated parcels and vacant buildings, but also the parcels in the flood plain. And we've used 100-year flood plain, and most of the vacant parcels that we've identified over the last two years are in floodplains. And this is one of the many reasons why these probably have not been developed. Leverage additional financing tools and encourage growth in existing areas. And these are just some of the example projects, Catalyst Project on Nyberg and Lower Boones Ferry Road, and this is proposed mixed-use development on city-owned property, and then also flood mitigation efforts on two and three. And this is just some renderings of, you know, the vacant lot right there with some multi-use development. Goal two is enhance connectivity, and we want to provide our citizens and residents and visitors and businesses with efficient multimodal access within the system and also to and from the area. And that's developing Main Street Corridor, increase major arterial capacity, improve existing intersections, and expand the area trail network. And these are the proposed projects. And for the public and also public record, this is online on our open house website, twalton.gov. So all this is on there, so if we're moving too fast, they can go back, either look at this or go to that, and they can also reach out to me at jaytaylor@twalton.gov for any questions. Multi-use development, we are, we want to encourage and facilitate affordable multifamily housing that is complementary to commercial development with expanded employment opportunities and lifestyle amenities. By law, we have to ensure land is available and developable for both residential and employment land. We have to support development and preservation of housing. And then as what we're doing in Basalt Creek with the modernization of the code, we want to adjust planning efforts based on economic landscapes. And these are just some of the opportunity parcels. This is not speculation. These are just vacant or blighted properties. And we also have to be very careful about using the term blight. These are definitions we use based on the Oregon revised statute. So this is not what we're saying should be developed. It's just could be poor planning, vacant lots, highest and best use needs, et cetera. Goal four is economic development, business assistance, and ZODCO changes that help establish opportunities for entrepreneurial growth and economic vitality. Goal five, establish a shared identity that represents the area's longstanding traditions and culture while fostering community connections and in a healthy relationship to the environment. There are two strategies, more recreational opportunities, which Ross and the Parks Department are doing a great job. And then strategy two, implementing a community design plan, which is to develop some sort of look and feel. And that was a number one, both with our Twalton 2040 working group as well as our CORA working group. And this is what we kind of mean by community identity, establishing something that's reminiscent of what Twalton specific, but looking at places like downtown Lake Oswego or Rinko Station, et cetera. Number seven is the Twalton River Plaza and Access Habitat Restoration Project, which got accolades from Washington County Board of Commissioners, as well as Clean Water Services. And then just implementing a community design standard, standard master plan, and what that may look like will lead up to community development for implementation, but just developing that shared feel and work. And the remaining four goals, industrial land development, providing public utilities, number seven, flood mitigation, and environmental stewardship. And these are just some maps of what we mean by this area. As you can see, the 100-year flood plain covers nearly 63% of the area. And we use the 100-year flood plain because that's more often, so therefore it's what's affected by the property. And then wetland areas, that's priority environmental stewardship. And plus, I misspoke a few meetings ago, so I wanted to clarify that not a lot of what I was saying wasn't the planned area. So on this slide is the overview of what is proposed. It's eighty-two point four million dollars in today's dollars. What does that look like in the plan document? That's a hundred and thirty-nine million dollars of maximum indebtedness. And so what, I'll kind of turn it over to Elaine to briefly describe tax increment financing of how it's funded. But what we can say is this is not a tax. This is not a new tax. This is a way that is derived from the increment on property values or major improvements.
So. I don't have any prompting slides.
No, no slides.
When an urban renewal area is formed, the tax assessor assesses what's called a frozen base assessed value of that area. That doesn't mean the taxes are frozen. It just means that the taxes off the value that the funding of the renewal area is formed continue going to all the different tax industries, so the city, the county, the school district. At the time, an urban renewal area is formed, any increase in value within that area from that three percent appreciation that we all just got our property tax bills that goes up annually unless we're in a deep recession or new construction. Any taxes off of that within the urban renewal area will go to the Urban Renewal Agency to do projects and programs within the area. So it's not a new tax for anybody. It is just dividing out the way people already pay their existing taxes so that the future taxes that are paid on future increases in assessed value will go to the Urban Renewal Agency instead of to those other tax jurisdictions. And the one really important thing to most communities is that this does not directly impact your schools. They are funded on a per pupil basis through the state's school fund. And although urban renewal, uh, is funded through permanent rate property taxes that do fund part of the state's school fund, there are other funding sources for the state's school fund. And the legislature establishes that per pupil amount and makes sure that they fill the state's school fund with the appropriate amount of funding to not have to reduce those per pupil amounts. Despite the fact that urban renewal across the state also funds through permanent property tax.
So tonight, Elaine will walk through what is requested by both taxing districts, the proposed changes. But real quick, as mentioned before, the City of Twalton, myself and Elaine, as well as Cheryl and Don and the mayor and Council Sacco presented to various boards. So we presented to Washington County Board of Commissioners, Plaquemines County Board of Commissioners, Twalton Valley Fire and Rescue, that was via Zoom, and then Tiger Twalton School District. And surprisingly, I'm going to be very honest, we got nothing but good reviews for this plan. Partly, we had Twalton Valley Fire and Rescue representative on our working group. Uh, Chief Cassandra Olden, she helped spear guided some of the discussions of what might be a sticking point for Twalton Valley Fire because while they're not never getting the increment, they are deferring that increment for thirty years. So they have a vested interest of still providing services at a high quality, but also ensuring operational capacity. We shrunk the district, we shrunk the maximum indebtedness, but also we have some proposed changes that have been submitted as a result. So.
I'll walk through those.
Yep.
So, uh, the statute requires that whenever you implement a new urban renewal plan, you are required to consult and confer with impacted taxing districts and give them a forty-five day period to provide responses. With any response that you receive, any written recommendation, you specifically have to either accept that, reject it, or modify your plan with that recommendation. So there are two recommendations, two groups made recommendations, one, the City of Twalton itself, and that was proposed language in section ten that talks about in the year twenty and twenty-five of the plan, the agency undertakes a financial analysis of the plan to make sure that it indeed will end in the timeframe that is what proposed to end, um, which is fiscal year end twenty fifty-three. And the, the city would then consult and confer back with the taxing jurisdictions and let them know this information. One of the things that Chief Olden, uh, has told me many times is they need this information in their long-term planning, just as you need information in your long-term planning. So they have many different urban renewal areas that overlap them, and they try to figure out when those areas will end and when they'll get those other resources. The third part of that recommendation from the city is that the agency will consider lengthening the duration of the plan if the revenues are beneath those projected to reach the maximum indebtedness in the thirty-year timeframe. And that any duration extension will not be considered until after twenty years of the effective date of the plan and will only be considered if the original maximum indebtedness is not projected to be reached within that thirty-year timeframe. So it, the fire district wanted a duration provision. The city said, well, we want to be able to review that. This provides that review specifically written within the plan and to be shared with the taxing districts so that you can make an informed decision. So, um, that is one of the proposed changes. The next set of changes came from the Washington County Board of Commissioners. Um, as Jonathan said, they were very supportive of the plan. There were a few items where they were particularly interested in fine tuning concepts within the plan. Uh, one was on enhanced connectivity, and the first one was, uh, coordinate with Washington County's Land Use and Transportation Department to leverage urban renewal area resources and enhance efficiency with connectivity projects. The second was, uh, within plan for potential regional projects inside and outside the planned area. So the action is to determine if expanding the core opportunity and reinvestment area boundary or creation of a new urban renewal district is the best option for major regional transportation projects like the Southwest Corridor, if that, um, project comes back. The third one was under mixed-use development strategy. Um, the current language is support development of for housing affordable to people who have incomes between sixty and one hundred and twenty percent of median family income in Washington County. They proposed a change to that to lower the percentage to thirty percent to a hundred and twenty percent of median family income. And then the final recommendation from them, uh, the current language is to design and construct a public gathering space and access point along the Twalton River. In addition, mitigate impacts while enhance environmental habitats near the project area. The proposed language is to design and construct a public gathering space and access point along the Twalton River. In addition, work with regional partners like Clean Water Services to mitigate impacts while enhancing environmental habitats near the project area. All of those are fairly minor changes and are just, I think, mostly outside of the housing one focusing on coordinating and keeping coordinating with the county. So as part of moving forward, you had a draft plan in front of you. The question would be, do you want to incorporate all of these concepts within that plan? And when it would come back to you in, on the November twenty eighth, meaning it would incorporate language that address both the city's language and the language from Washington County. So that is one thing that you will have to decide, and you can decide that after you do the public hearing or bring us back to ask any questions on that.
So the next steps, uh, proceeding from tonight will be, we'll finalize the plan with any approved changes, whether that be from the public, from the council, or from our recommended taxing districts. And then we will also add the boundary legal description, the area that we pointed out with the Nyberg Trail area. We're having a little bit of trouble trying to ascertain the actual boundary of rights and easements because there's a bike easement, sewer easement and all that stuff. And so we're trying to figure out legally which one's the best to use. So that's the only hiccup. But the legal description is pretty much in ready to go except for that area. That's why it's not included in your, um, packet tonight, but that'll be the final thing that we do. And then on November twenty eighth, it'll be either the first reading or all the readings, depending on the unanimous or non-unanimous vote of council, and that'll be the consideration of final adoption with any kind of recommended changes.
Thank you. Uh, so with that, since this is a public hearing, don't go far. Well, you can stay in the room. I want to open the floor to, uh, anyone in the public who would like to, uh, let their feelings know in favor of this urban renewal zone. Do you have anyone signed up in Zoom? Uh, any, uh, folks who oppose this urban renewal zone proposal? If we're neutral, we just want to talk about it a little bit. All right. With that, I'll go ahead and open the floor for questions from council to or Jonathan and Elaine.
I don't have any, I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to add a couple of comments, um, with being, um, part intimate with this process, um, for CORA. Um, I, I was just really impressed with how, um, how the city listened to the community. We started off with, you know, a much bigger area, um, larger dollar numbers and just listening to the community and really the needs of the community, um, how we, how the city really shrunk, shrunk that down to be very efficient and, um, conservative with, um, with the dollar values, and I really appreciated that. Um, and you did that through, through really listening to the needs. Um, also, um, working with our taxing districts in a collaborative way. Um, I was really impressed by that as well. And then just the, with the transparency in which, um, Jonathan, you answered questions in these meetings that some of them were pretty tough and um, you were just very transparent and honest and which makes me feel really good about, about this project. So I just wanted to voice that. Um, with sitting in these meetings with community members. So I just want to thank you for all your work. I appreciate it.
My, my comment is it seems like these, um, changes are just kind of fine tuning. So it makes a lot of sense to me. Yes.
Hey, thank you.
Public comment was over.
Uh, you were pretty darn speedy. I'm not used to using Zoom. Thank you. Um, so I have a couple of concerns there. I, I should attend more of these meetings, obviously. Two of the proposed changes, or at least one of them, has to do with changing the median, medium, median. Well, the, 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 the income range to make affordable housing to people who are earning between thirty and one hundred and twenty percent of the median income. Thirty percent of the median income. I have no idea how you're going to build, um, a residence that would meet that need unless you oh my God, I don't know, you're maybe building high-rise apartment buildings or something like that, which is kind of what we have going up on Norwood, apparently. I think that's kind of ridiculous. Uh, I, I, depending on where you put it, I think that's insane. Number two, another screen I saw had to do with engaging in property development, overall development that would increase value for residents, for business owners, for all of us here. I'm really quite certain that if you put a high-rise on Norwood across the street from a residential area of relatively relatively well-priced homes and just down the road from Victoria Woods, you're not going to do anything for values for us living in that area. And if you have any concern about quality of life, you just do not have the, the infrastructure locally to support that many new residents in that immediate area right on Boones Ferry and right on Norwood, especially, you know, considering if those folks decide to head east on Norwood over the freeway and down that choked road to sixty-fifth, it's already a, it's just already bottlenecked. It's, it's just kind of nuts. So the, the changes I see sound kind of interesting and good and progressive sort of, except that for people who live here, it isn't. So that's, that's my two cents. You'll be hearing more from me. Thanks.
Mr. Cobb?
Yeah.
Uh, would you like to address that or you want me to or?
I mean, you can, uh, the boundary doesn't include Norwood.
That's a Mr. Cobb, the, the boundary of the urban renewal zone does not go down to Norwood, but it doesn't apply there. Also on, on the thirty percent AMI, there are not-for-profits who build facilities that do this. An example is going to be the SEPA facility, uh, down in Basalt Creek is that they build that. They run it and they can afford and bring people in at thirty percent AMI.
Can you spell the name of the, um, facility you're talking about?
Partners for Affordable Housing. It's the Plan Beck Gardens Project.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else on Zoom? Now that it's up there. All right. That's a crap.
Well, speaking to that, like in that core area, um, one of our goals I know is to try to get, um, the denser housing close to transportation modes. And that's exactly where our core area is. So I don't have a problem with reducing that to thirty percent. Oh, I'd like to, I don't know how to words. I'd just like to make motion that we adopt the changes to this ordinance. Do I have to read it in a different way? Oh, do we?
Just say, accept the change.
Accept the changes because we're not actually approving it. Yeah, that we, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the changes presented this evening. Second.
You said.
Kristen.
Okay. I have a motion, a second to adopt the changes suggested by the other taxing entities and the City of Twalton. Any special on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, unanimous. Right?
All right. So we'll see you on November twenty eighth for the final consideration.
Thank you.
I'm reading the whole.
Yep. All right. So that brings us to our next public hearing, uh, consideration of ordinance number one, four, seven, zero, dash, twenty-two. Vacating a portion of the right-of-way located at the East Terminus of Microloney Street and authorizing the city manager to take any and all actions necessary to implement the ordinance. Uh, this is not really a land use hearing, uh, but we're going to follow that format, just be transparent and make sure we dot the i's and cross the t's on this one. So this is now a public hearing for the consideration of ordinance one, four, seven, zero, dash, twenty-two, vacating a portion of the right-of-way located at the East Terminus of Microloney Street and authorizing the city manager to take any and all actions necessary to implement this ordinance. I'll now formally open the hearing at this time. The criteria that apply to our decision tonight and the merits of this hearing are listed in both the staff report and may be further expanded or clarified during the hearing. But generally speaking, the question presented is whether the public interest would be prejudiced if we approve the requested street vacation. If you wish to testify, your testimony must be directed towards the, this issue or another issue that you believe applies to this decision. The order of the hearing tonight will be as follows. First, we will have the staff report. Then we will hear any testimony from the applicant. Then those in support of the application, followed by those opposed to the application, and any neutral testimony. Any interested public agencies, then the applicant's rebuttal to anything that was said by those folks in support or opposition. And finally, questions by council. At that point, the hearing will be closed and note where the testimonial argument is allowed. The council will then deliberate and either make a decision or continue the hearing to a date certain and make the decision at that time. At the end of the hearing, the council may either grant or deny the requested vacation or continue the hearing to a date certain. At this point, I'll ask council members whether any of you need to disclose any personal bias, ex parte communications or conflict of interest. Seeing none? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to challenge the qualifications of any member of the councils to participate in this matter? Seeing none? Okay, we'll go ahead and we'll proceed with this hearing and we'll start off with Steve Cooper. Welcome.
Evening, Mayor. Good evening, city councilors. My name is Steve Cooper. I'm your Assistant Community Development Director, and I'm here to present the Microloney Street Vacation Ordinance. The agenda for tonight is a little bit of background on the project, proposed street vacation before and after, a summary of the notification requirements, and then the approval criteria, followed by conclusion and recommendation. Um, I apologize in advance. I know you've all seen this before, but again, this is a public hearing, and so in the interest of transparency, I've walked us through um, essentially the same, the same presentation, more or less, that you saw on October twenty-fourth. With that, by way of background, a street vacation is simply, uh, taking a portion of a public street. It could be, uh, developed or it could be just simply dedicated right away, and it's removed, um, from being a public street, and it goes back to the private property owner who owned And it goes back to the private property owner who owned that portion of ground prior to it being dedicated as a street. Oregon provides statute, chapter two seventy-one allows the city to initiate the process and make a decision at a public hearing like this evening's. As I mentioned, on October twenty-fourth, council unanimously directed staff to return with the ordinance and conduct this public hearing. And then last point that I'll make on the background is the staff report and attachments in your packet this evening demonstrate applicable criteria met. Also, again, in the interest of transparency, walk through those briefly as we go through this presentation. Again, just to be super clear on what we're here to do this evening, here is the proposed street vacation for and after. So Mysloney Street was previously a cul-de-sac termination and through development application, it was determined that it would be extended further for on, further onto the east in order to improve area connectivity with regard to the street network. Obviously, that left a little portion on kind of the fringes of the street dedication, no longer needed to be part of the right-of-way. So just quickly to go through the notification requirements that are laid out in ORS, chapter two seventy-one, where the property owners abutting the street vacation notified. Yes, they were. They asked the city to initiate it because it's in their interest to get the property back and owned by them. Was notice published in a newspaper of general circulation two consecutive weeks prior to the hearing? Yes, we publish notice of this hearing in the Tiger Twolton Times on both October twentieth and twenty-seven, two weeks consecutively prior to, two weeks prior to the hearing. A copy of the affidavit of publishing of that publication is in your packet. And then lastly, was notice posted on the site physically five days within, excuse me, within five days of the first date of new street publications. That's five days after October twentieth. And yes, a copy of the map showing the posting locations and photos of the signed postings is included. That is evidence that the notification requirements are met. And then approval criteria is just again, where the notification requirements met. Yes. And then, as the mayor mentioned in his opening spiel, is the proposed street vacation in the public interest. And I think there's two specific reasons why that criterion is met. The portion of the street proposed to be vacated is, as I mentioned, no longer needed for a public purpose. It doesn't contain public utilities. It's not needed for public access. And then second of which is that the extension of Southwest Mysloney Street, which was, which is being facilitated in part by this beyond the original cul-de-sac better serves the public interest, as I mentioned, street connectivity and future development potential for the area. With that, this is my conclusion slide. Staff recommends council adopt ordinance number fourteen seventy dash twenty-two. Given a brief summary of what that action would entail and I'm happy to answer any questions from council or if anything comes up in the public testimony portion.
Steve. At this point, is there anyone here from the applicant who would like to testify on behalf of the ordinance?
Yeah. Good evening. My name's Brian Kendo. I'm with Failon Development. We just completed the Mysloney project shown on the previous slide and are working towards developing the area just to the north of the new street extension. Yeah, it appears that this is just kind of a technicality to wrap up the changes we've made to facilitate the new extension of the street. So I think we've been working really well with the city and, and doing our projects and they've been very helpful. And we look forward to continual partnership with the city and, and doing more projects.
Thank you. Other persons who want to testify in support of this application besides the applicant? Right? Are those who would like to testify in opposition to this application? Are there any other interested public agencies who would like to testify at this time? I don't think we need a time for rebuttal because so far it looks like everybody's on board with it. Questions to council for Steve. So no questions. I'll go ahead and close the hearing at this time and we'll begin council deliberations.
There's the deliberations. If there's no deliberations, I'd like to propose that we have a first reading by title only of ordinance number one four seven zero dash twenty-two.
I have a motion, a second for re-invited title only, first reading by title only of ordinance number one four seven zero dash twenty-two. Any discussions on those motions? We have to do roll here, right? Because the ordinance is coming back.
Okay.
Councilor Sacco.
Aye.
Councilor Hillier.
Aye.
Council Pratt.
Aye.
Council Reyes. President Grimes.
Aye.
I vote aye also.
Hey, I'd like to propose we have a second reading by title only. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Ordinance number fourteen seventy dash twenty-two and ordinance approving the vacation of public right-of-way and associated utility easement previously used for an eastern cul-de-sac for Southwest Mysloney Street.
Now may I motion that we have a second reading by title only of ordinance number one four seven zero dash twenty-two. Second.
I have a motion, a second for second title, second reading by title only of ordinance number one four seven zero dash twenty-two. Any discussion on that motion? Councilor Sacco.
Aye.
Council Hillier.
Aye.
Council Pratt.
Aye.
Council Reyes. That's President Grimes.
Aye.
I vote aye also.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ordinance number fourteen seventy dash twenty-two and ordinance approving the vacation of public right-of-way and associated utility easement previously used for an eastern cul-de-sac for Southwest Mysloney Street.
I'd like to motion that we adopt ordinance number fourteen seventy dash twenty-two. Second.
A motion, a second to adopt ordinance number one four seven zero dash twenty-two. Any discussion on that motion? Councilor Sacco.
Aye.
Council Hillier.
Aye.
Council Pratt.
Aye.
Council Reyes. President Grimes.
Aye.
I vote aye also. It's unanimous. The ordinance is adopted. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Special reports and next up is Don Hudson with our quarterly financial report. Welcome, Don.
Mayor, how are you? Excuse me?
Good having you.
Council, great. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Don Hudson. I'm the assistant city manager and finance director of the city. And it's my pleasure to introduce or to present to you this evening, the fiscal, the first quarter of the fiscal year twenty-three quarterly financial report. Easy for me to say.
Three times.
Say it once. For the items that we're going to cover this evening, we'll talk about the quarterly investment report for the first quarter of this year twenty-three. I'll go over, talk about the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two annual audit process. And then we'll talk about some quarter-to-date revenues and expenditures and where we're at through September thirtieth of twenty-twenty-two. So I handed out to you earlier, the hard copy is a lot easier to read than what you might've had on screen. What this is, is the items that are part of our investment policy that need to be reported to the city council on a quarterly basis. There are a couple of items that I want to talk about this evening and will point out a little bit more instead of going over all the numbers in front of you. On the distribution by asset type, that top portion, you'll see the cash and equivalents is just about half of our total eighty-plus million-dollar portfolio. What that is, that's, those are our investments in the state local government investment pool as well as our bank accounts. And so the money we have invested in that are just considered cash, cash equivalents. They are liquid and we can get to them in a very fast manner if needed. About forty-seven percent of the portfolio is invested in U.S. Treasury and U.S. Agency instruments. If you look at the asset allocation at policy level on the, on the right side there, that's the federal farm credit bank. The, so there are all the acronyms there. The Federal Home Loan Bank, the Federal Home Loan Mortgage Corporation, and the Fannie Mae Federal Mortgage. Also that I'm missing with the acronym, Fannie Mae. So you see about forty-seven percent of our portfolio is in those instruments. We do have a small percentage in corporate notes. And if you see the rating distribution chart there, a large majority of our investments are in instruments that are AAA rated or higher. Or actually, it's the highest, so triple A rated. And so any of the corporate, which is about six percent of our portfolio, are in highly rated investments, corporate, you know, in corporate notes. We also do have four investments in municipal bonds, including the Oregon State Housing and Community Services Department, as well as we are invested in some Beaverton School District bonds as well. And then a couple of those housing in San Diego and the state of California are other two municipal investments. We ended the audit part of our presentation this evening. A marine company is our auditors. They are located actually here in Twolton. They were onsite last week and I was going to say you will be receiving a letter from them that is signed by me, which is referred to as a letter to those charged with governance. If you haven't already filled this out, fill it out and send it back directly to the auditors. It is part of generally accepted auditing procedures. That's why you get it every year. And so it's just a questionnaire that needs to be filled out and returned to them. Our annual comprehensive financial report or act for will be completed by December thirty-first. At that point, then we turn, we submit that to the state, State of Oregon auditors, the state of, Secretary of State of Audit Division. I would say. And then we also submit it to the Government Finance Officers Association for their certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. The June thirty, twenty twenty award there, the last medallion you see on the screen was the last one that we received notification on our twenty twenty-one budget. Financial report is still in review. We're to review the actors. But the June thirty, twenty twenty was the thirtieth consecutive year we received that award. We also, you'll notice on those medallions there, there's a little crown. That means is we are triple crown winners. And we got these nice crowns that look like something you got for Burger King. But they, they, you did not scratch that off, but I could get some from GFOA. What the triple crown award is, there's three different award programs through GFOA. It's the act for award that I was talking about, the hour.
Comprehensive.
Annual financial report. Which is, it's a smaller version of our act for. It's more easier to read and a lot less numbers, just numbers. And then our budget award that we've received for a number of years. You've all three of those awards from GFOA. It's our this acknowledgement of triple crown winners. So we get these medallions and we got these fancy crowns there. Before I get into the budget actuals, I want to give you some updates on some increases of some revenues that we're seeing since the budget was adopted. The first is the opioid settlement. You'll remember that our former city attorney, Sean Brady, brought a resolution to you last December to sign agreements to participate in the settlement and get allocation through the, from those through the state and to us. We received our first year allocation of just over ninety-two hundred dollars in August. The year two allocation we just received word will come to us by the end of the year and that's about ninety-eight hundred dollars. It's an eight, these settlements are over an eighteen-year period. And the plan right now is to hold the money while programs are being considered, that would be the best use of those monies. But we are starting to receive those settlement dollars. The second item that I want to give you a little bit of an update on is the marijuana taxes. You'll know that when measure one-ten, it significantly lowered our state share of those, those revenues. We have since started receiving a collection of the local tax for our local dispensary. And I'm anticipating stages of receiving that. I'm anticipating we will likely make up the losses from measure one-ten by our local tax. So that's good news of not having to consider what, or, you know, we could absorb those losses and revenue made back up. The last item is our property taxes. We, the, both counties have certified their tax rule. We budgeted three and a half percent assessed value growth between the two counties. It came in at four point eight percent, which would be about an increased estimated revenue, about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars higher than what we budgeted in this just week. And we'll start seeing those revenues coming in later this month. I talked a little bit about the budget to actuals. The first one I want to talk about is the building fund. You'll notice our revenues are up significantly from about eighteen percent in the first quarter last year to over fifty percent. And that's related to the development that we're seeing around town of the building permits and other permits that are being pulled and for some of those bigger projects. So we are starting to see that rebound. In the road utility fund, you'll see the expenditures are significantly higher in the first quarter of fiscal year twenty-three than they were in first quarter of fiscal year twenty-two. And that's, you'll see these ebb and flow a little bit depending on our maintenance program each year and when those expenditures might take place. The big one in this first quarter was the hundred and twenty-fourth overlay, which was the big project in the pavement maintenance program this year. And that was completed during that period, which is why you see a significant expenditures in the first quarter of this year compared to last year. The next two items will be in the road operating fund in the revenues as well as the stormwater operating fund. These are both significantly higher revenues than last year. I'll go back and so it's about twice as much revenue received in the first quarter last year in the road operating. And about three hundred thousand or so this, what that was is the Herman Road Improvement Project out here. So the Herman Road Industrial Project down the street, instead of having them do the, the stormwater in the road, these that are part of their development. They've paid us an in-lu payment so that when we do the rest of that project, we're not tearing it up a second time. So we received that money from them related to that project in last fiscal year. And then we'll hold on to that money and I'll go towards the project when we do the bigger project out here on Herman Road. Or area parking. So you first might ask, well, why is the percentage so much higher in last fiscal year when, if you look at the revenue actuals, they're pretty much the same? Well, that's based on the budget. We have a much higher budget this year and that's because the blue lot ADA design is in the budget. And so when you, when you compare those revenues to a higher budget amount, that's why those percentages are so different, even though we've got the same amount of money coming in. The water operating fund on the revenue side, you'll see that it's significantly higher on the budget side. And that's because we have projects that would be, that are budgeted in the water operating fund this year that have a component that is system development charge eligible. And so what we do in those cases is we budget the project as a whole in the operating fund. And then we transfer in from the development fund, system development charge fund for that eligible portion. So the transfers in are significantly higher this year because of those projects. And then you see the same on the budget side and the expenditure side because we have more projects in the water operating fund that are being completed this year than in the past year. At that, happy to answer. Any, any questions? I was hopefully no concerns. No questions or comments would be good too, but I'd be happy to answer any you do have.
Questions for Don?
It's been a couple of years because I've asked this, but on your portfolio, the investment report, you know, it's obviously very risk adverse. And are you limited in how risk, how much risk you can take? And then, and my second question to that is, how do you decide which investments to make? Is there like a team or how is that done?
So when we sold the transportation bonds was, was the time we went out and hired an investment advisor because we could no longer have it all in the state pool. Exceed our limits. So we brought on an investment advisor at that point. So we meet with them on an annual basis, but then anytime we have something mature, we have conversations. They give us a proposal of what they think we should invest in and then we either say yes or we. Yes, definitely. We are. Safety is one of our highest pieces of that and we are limited by state statute, the types of investments we can invest in, how, how long we can invest in them, what our diversification needs to look like and at the higher rated. So you see all those triple A rated investments. That's the types of things we're, and that's based on our policy that I came. Built in there, but yes, we have things that we have to follow. So we're all governed by state. built in there. But yes, we have things that we have to follow, uh, that are all governed by statute and our policy.
And is it correct that this has outperformed the state funds?
It is, it has. Uh, we are starting to see the state pool significantly go up. What happens is those go up faster, they also go down faster. So we have been, we are starting to be, our portfolio or yield has been, is lower than the state right now. Uh, but part of our whole strategy out towards our five-year. No questions for Don? Just one from the CPA, that's it. But I didn't hear any concerns or anything else, so I'm looking good.
Good, thank you. Congratulations on the triple crowns. I love it.
Yeah.
My crowd in, but I'm not sure where I put.
Thank you.
Thanks, Don. All right, that moves us on to general business. We have one item on general business. Our public services request to consider a rate increase and two additional solid waste and recycling programs. Lindsay. Welcome. I'd say you probably want to come up with every question.
All right. Good evening, Council, Lindsay Marshall, and I'm here with our Public Services Team. Uh, KJ Lewis and Matt Kitchen, and they're here to answer any and all questions you have. Uh, so I've got just a brief presentation mostly to help guide us through the conversation. Uh, we've got three programmatic considerations tonight for you. Um, the rate increase across all services, residential organics, and the consideration of the recycle plus program. And so what we're looking for at the end of tonight's discussion is guidance on whether you'd like us to come back with resolutions. For each of these, there would be three separate resolutions, one each for increase, a re-increase, um, organics and recycle plus. So you can say yes, you know, bring this one back. We don't want this one right now. Come back with something different for another one and do as you wish. Oh, there we go. Oh, that's what we're doing. So the first consideration is a rate increase across all and collection services for residential movement and industrial. This is primarily coming from metro increases that are trickling down to us. And they've been doing some rate stabilization and projection over the next five years. This year it's a 7.1% increase. It's about 7.1 to 7.9 projected for the next few years. So between 2020 and 2027, it's about a 67% increase in these tonnage charges, which is the cost of the disposal at, um, the transfer stations. So this is something that Metro is projecting out. They're going to reassess every year, but right now it's about a seven, seven to eight percent increase every year, next five years that we will be coming to talk to you about. So, um, that is why Republic is asking for this increase because they are, they have been increased through Metro. The rate increase for this year went into effect July 1st of 2022. And so Republic's, uh, after a 7.8 increase is essentially just offsetting the cost of the metro increase that they are receiving on there. So questions about that, it would be about, um, $2.29 on average per 35 gallon cart for customer, which is what most customers in Twolton have. So it's, for the resident for customers, it'd be about $2.29 a month increase based on the speed.
Well, are you saying the metro increased their rates from 7.1%? And then the other point seven is just, is that just increased costs and wage increases?
Inflationary pressure, which is rising.
But, but almost all of it's because of the metro fee. Okay.
Like a pass through from there.
Yeah, wow.
Okay.
At the metro, anyway, say this the right way. I presented this to the mayors and the mayors were like, why are you assuming 8% increase every year for the next five years? We understand inflation right now, but in year three, what if inflation is 3%? Why are we going to give you 8%? Uh, so they're, what they are willing to renegotiate if they will, revisit it, but they basically said, put your amount, minds right now, 8% every year for, you know, the next five years.
And how are they justifying that?
Their increased costs around the transfer stations. I mean, they're saying, they're, they're saying they have, they have the same struggles as all the garbage haulers in the area between staffing and costs and gas, all that good stuff. And running the facilities, that's just what it's costing.
Yeah, I guess I'm trying to understand. So the, when you say metro, that's, that's the government, right? Government. Um, they're increasing by between seven and eight or seven, nine percent every year.
For next, for five years.
Where it's so, I guess my, my, I just want to make sure that it's, I am trying to understand the why and, and I'm trying to understand also the, so is it going to employees? I mean, how is that?
Hey, do you want to explain how, how your garbage rolls to or transfer station to a metro facility and have metro charges for tip and all that good stuff?
No, it's just really, no.
It's, it's interesting stuff.
The easiest way to think of it is it's passed, so metro, the rate meeting agency gives us basically, hey, here's the tons you can have and here's the cost that are going to be associated with those tons. And they're, they set the, they set the bar. So if we get a 7.3, then we're going to come and say it's 7.3. Republic doesn't, that's not Republic's money. That's going to just basically go from us to Metro. I don't know if that answers the question clearly.
That's answering my question. I'm just trying to understand.
That's for their garbage.
Yeah. I mean, you did answer my question. I don't, I do understand a pass through thing. It's just, um, not considering, I guess my, my whole thing is like not considering people that are already, you know, on a tight budget. Not consider, I mean, it's just like, it's just a really big increase for the next five years. I don't know. For me, it just really sounds uh, very unjust for a lot of people. It's really going to affect people.
At one point, they talked about having two rate increases within the same fiscal year. But through lobbying and the like, they backed off that and held off a re-increase of this.
Correct. And, uh, metro can't charge more than the cost of operation for these tonnage fees. Um, so their justification is that is the cost of disposal, right? And so they're not charging more for this, for these tipping fees. Um, they're not going towards other parts of metros, you know, CIP projects or something like that. This fee itself is only for the cost of disposal.
It's not providing any more jobs. It's not helping some other people or nothing like that. It's just charging people.
I will say that the cities have been very active
Right.
in lobbying metro and it's been the topic of many regional managers meetings where we've harangued metro and forced them to like outline all of the stuff Lindsay was just saying, like, it has to go towards the actual program as opposed to like, are you putting it somewhere else? Are you putting, you know, it's like, are you supplementing other programs with this increase? And I, I trust our, our, I mean, I trust our staff and like the regional city staff that they've combed through it and, and will continue to just bring pressure to metro, but like it, apparently the cost of doing business is going up.
And it's, versus Nancy and I've been on council every year, it goes up. And it's always, it's usually the lion's share of the re-increase is from metro with a few percentage points for the garbage haulers. Uh, so what, the 16 years we've been together? It's every year. It's, it's never been, it's, it's just metro collecting the funds to toss this garbage.
Correct. And this, uh, this, the increase went into effect July of 22. So Republic has kind of eaten that cost, uh, through this increase. If approved, would be January 1st, 2023. There's about six months. And just, thank you, just for us, us newbies, um, or newer counselors. Um, so since it has gone up every year, what is the average and how does a 7.8 compare to previous years?
It was lower in the past.
It was lower.
This is, this is like a
Okay. More than double.
For this year, for 2022, it was 4.8.
Okay.
So this is definitely.
And has that been pretty consistent, like in that four range?
And that was a little high.
Even though, okay.
As you said, I remember three.
Three-ish. And then it kind of, no, it's just exponential.
I would just hate to set any precedence to like.
Well, that's the thing.
Yeah, we can.
They baked it in for the next five years.
Right.
The 2023 7.1, 2025, you're looking at 7.9 and then 2027, back down a little bit to 7.1. So.
In my conversation with Chair Peterson, they're trying to stabilize the financing of, of Metro's
Yes.
garbage program. It's always been like this and they're trying to get like this. And this is a new way of looking at it, but if you're reading a lot of the cities, you know, seeing, you know, these rate increases for the next few years. And we're like, okay, how we know you're being efficient? You know, how are you going to display? Okay, you use this way? How's it being used? Are we going to see your, you know, your, your balance sheet on this? Uh, and they've been trying to be a lot more transparent than they have in the past, but you have to fight for it, the information. It's council prep and council rant.
So these, these dumping fees you pay, what percentage of all your, like, of all your expenses, you've got employee costs? So I'm wondering how much this is affecting your bottom line because you've got other costs too. So how much of your total cost is this fee that you pay to Metro?
Disposal. I won't give you an exact percentage.
No, a range.
It's, it's a very large chunk.
Okay.
We have been absorbing this since July. And we just thought that was the right approach and then just work this into our regular schedule. Uh, we did not expect a double down on the, on the pass-through taxes, but, um, that's what came down.
I mean, this is
It's a big
Large like 35 or something.
Yeah, he's not telling me.
Yeah, I know. So.
Okay. So, um, I'm thinking of a lot of people coming to us and talking to us about it. And I'm thinking of a lot of people calling and emailing, my fees are going up. What are you doing this? Is there, and obviously they're going to be like, I, I, the answer, well, Metro, the, you know, the whole um, explanation, but is there a, who can our residents go to if they have any, any kind of like comments and concerns about this, these fees?
Metro.
Also Rosenbaum.
Yep.
Also Garrett, Garrett Rosenbaum is the, our rep on Metro Council.
Garrett Rosen.
Rosenbaum.
Yes.
And he presents here, doesn't he?
Yeah, I know, but I think people that do not know this, I mean, I don't, I'm, I've been on council and I wouldn't know where to go.
You also could go right to the top, uh, you know, President Peterson, Lynn Peterson.
Because I think that people will come and think that it's us. And, and that is, uh, want to be able to say, here's where you need to contact and call for that concern because it is really above us.
Yeah. And every year, so this is the projected five years. And every year Metro will assess, like, does this projection make sense? And they can adjust as necessary. So it's not like set in stone for the next five years. And then so every budgetary process, there are public hearings and so folks can come and give public comments on those, on those discussions for these rate increases. Metro is a great place to defend them.
Yeah, thank you. Would you again clarify what Metro is charging and what you're proposing?
Uh, yes. Uh, Republic is asking 7.8% and Metro is charging 7.1%.
Okay, so why can't we make it 7.1%?
We need to, you could.
But we're, we're asking for 7.8 to cover. You remember when we presented before the 8 to 12% with a target of 10% is generally accepted rate of return? I believe we gave that last time we were here. Um, so just those few extra percentage points gets us to the 10% there to cover our other costs that, like everything else, has gone up. Wages, inflationary pressures. But people's income hasn't gone up that much. Not everybody's income is going up 7.8%. I guess is part of my question, my feeling. And I guess I'd like a better clarification. A major part tipping, is that like 35%? Cause your other expenses are in the, below that. Is it 75% that you pay to Metro? Is it?
Again.
Hmm.
Typically payroll is the number one. Disposal comes a very close second.
So they're like 35% each or something?
I would say, yeah, between 30 and 40% is what you're talking about.
Thank you.
Sure.
And as you consider this proposal, it, Republic is asking, based on their financials, for 7.8. But he was counsel 10, I say, we would give you 7.1% to come back with a different, or that is within.
It, I, I wish in our packet, we would have been given some financials and the rate of return you were looking at. Cause it was hard to prepare for this without that information. And, um, it, it's, it's just really tough because you have every right to make a decent profit for your company. And I know you're, um, a good employer, but, um, we also have people that, I mean, this is a huge tip for, um, people that live here.
Question.
Yeah, my first question is, when you're looking at, you know, $2.30 a month increase in the first year and then on up from there. Um, are there any kind of like hardship waivers or any options for relief for people that are fixed income or have other situations that would make increases difficult? Cause it's really hard to imagine, you know, people having to forego garbage service, garbage collection service. I mean, are there any kind of programs for people that?
For a time, the county had funding to, to assist with utilities. Um, and there are nonprofits that do assist people and we will always work with somebody if they're, they're having a hard time.
Thanks. But then I would like to say, I mean, in my experience, since I moved to Twolton and my family moved here, we lived in the city of Portland prior to moving here. And one of the things that we were amazed with when we first moved here, started working with Republic was the amount of services that we received from them. Um, just as an average homeowner and how much less we paid here in Twolton than we did when we were living in Portland. I mean, it was an extraordinary difference as far as being able to have, you know, yard debris recycling every single week. And, you know, the garbage service and everything, it was like better service and so much less than what you're paying in Portland. And I've always just really felt like Republic has been a really good partner to the city and has always really tried to give what I've always felt has been like really good service with really reasonable rates. And I'm just really sorry that, you know, the way that Metro is handling this and the fee increases that they're pushing down gets sort of, you know, mixed in with what you guys need to come as a business and, and talk to us for, um, you know, that doesn't lessen the sticker shock that everybody has to feel. But, you know, I've always felt that you guys have been a really good partner to the city and I've always really appreciated that. So. Yeah, thank you for that. But, yeah, if we could get any kind of information out for people that would be looking for any kind of assistance or relief, because I do think that this is going to start snowballing for people that are already seeing increases in, you know, gas and insurance and electric, electricity. It just eats away at fixed income and it really scares me.
That would be great to have.
Questions? With, the way I want to try to handle this is just do one by one. So on the rate increase, I want to, since this is, you know, a public hearing, not a public hearing, but public comment. I have a few folks signed up or commented. I don't know if it's particular to the rate increase or the other two items after that. So I want to just open the floor to anyone who would like to speak in favor of the proposed rate increase. So I want to just open the floor to anyone who would like to speak in favor of the proposed rate increase.
That's a tough one.
All right. Those who are opposed to the rate increase, like to testify tonight. Those who are neutral on it and just want to discuss it a little bit. All right, so with that, we'll back the council. So we have to cut one of the three options Lindsey has up there. What is the council's preference? Let's elaborate on this one first.
Well, if, if we're saying that, like, half the expenses are for this metro fee and half are, like, say, employees, it's probably mostly that. And say a five percent increase for employees and seven point one, I'm not, I'm not, you know what I'm saying? Like, say half their costs are for employees. So, say a five percent increase for employee costs for salaries or whatever, that they're going to give over the next year. And the other half of their cost is for this tipping fee, and that's seven point one. So if you average that out, we're more like around six percent. And their profitability should stay fairly the same. So I'm not sure where we're at, almost eight percent.
But the, the metro minimum is seven point one.
But that's only half their cost.
Right, but they're only asking, they're asking for a seven point eight.
Yeah. So I thought it was seven tenths of a percent.
But that's including all their costs, including, but half their costs are employee costs. And that's not going up at eight percent.
It's not for each category, it's overall.
I know, but it's overall, overall consists of different pieces. The tipping fee, the employee costs to remain to their same profitability. So, I guess I'm not understanding that, why it's as high as it is.
Yeah, now I'm feeling like I'm misunderstanding. I thought I'm getting.
Are you asking?
Well, I'm saying you, if you, you're trying to maintain your profitability at this eight to ten percent level, correct?
Eight to twelve, yeah, that would target.
Okay, but, so, we're being presented that there's this tipping fee that's increasing by seven point one percent. But that's only half of the additional costs you're going to, you know, that's only part of the expenses you're paying. It's not.
See, I think, are you thinking of the ten percent that they're aiming for, and then seven point one only makes up a certain?
Half of the expenses they're paying out, yes. So, and I'm saying, if we say we give, let's just say, to keep things simple, that you're bringing in the same revenue, but what you're having to pay out is, let's say, half of it's for employee costs and half of it's for tipping fee. Well, if the tipping fee is going up seven point one percent, employee costs are going up five percent, that's not averaging out to seven point eight percent. So if you, you know, you added them twelve, so you're at six percent for an increase to keep that profitability the same. So I'm not understanding why it's almost up at eight percent to keep that profitability in.
Think.
We need Dawn back in here to help me.
So, one is just the metro increase for the tipping fee of seven point one percent, and they're asking for seven point eight to cover that tipping fee. The ten percent is a separate percentage target.
Yeah. No, I get that, but I'm saying, if, why, why do we have to do an increase to cover? The tipping fee is only part of the costs they're paying out. We're not, i- it's not making sense to me that. That's not their only expense they have to pay out.
Republic or?
Right. No, Republic, their tipping fee is part of what their cost of doing business is, but it's only about half of it. So the other half isn't increasing that much of what.
Correct, to the.
So, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm getting in the weeds here.
And maybe something, maybe something to clarify is that the, and I think what, what Val say, what Council Pratt is saying is that, so that's, that's seven point one percent, that's, that's the increase, that's on, that's on your cost. But is the seven point eight increase to the consumer, that's on retail, what you're, and so I think that's the difference, right? Like, no, because you're, are you increasing the rate by seven point eight percent? But your cost is a lower, your tipping fee is at a lower rate.
No, the tipping fee is just, so they're saying we need, right? Yeah, it's a pie, so it's just like Dawn was doing, th- they want to increase their revenues to cover their additional costs they're going to incur. Half those costs are the tipping fees, which is the seven point one. And the other half or most of it is going to be for their employee costs. So, are they saying they're going to increase almost eight percent their employee costs too?
Yeah, I think we're saying the same thing.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Trying to find, you're trying, I think, you're trying to solve for the seven tenths. So you understand.
When you're not. Yeah, I, I get that, but I, I'm, I'm not getting that.
Ask us seven eight.
But, yeah, you're asking seventy, which doesn't matter, but that, that increase in tipping fee is only part of the additional costs. So why do you have to make up the, you're doubling the revenue.
So there's six months that we've been paying this increase without any offset. So we've been paying that.
So you're making up for that?
There's a piece of it. I mean, I'm just trying to solve.
Long term.
What I think I'm trying to solve for. So we've been paying that all along, right? So there's, there's a piece of that. So seven one, six months ago would have been seven one, seven one. Now, there's, there's a fractional piece of that. And then as KJ indicated, there's, there's the margin that we're trying to, to get to. So we've got, you know, you know, our, our employees are.
I guess I'm, we're not getting that piece of what your employee cost increases are to know why the revenue needs to increase this whole amount.
Here's my suggestion.
I'm sorry, I'm.
It's one two.
Yeah, let's go with two.
We were already planning on coming back on the twenty-eighth with potentially a, a resolution. My ask to Republic is that you come back with a presentation about your financials and justifying the rate increase. And that describes what goes into the rate increase. And that also outlines the, the, the metro piece of it, but also the rest of all the puzzle pieces that, that, that goes into a rate increase.
Yep.
And make that presentation again and.
I, I mean, it's understandable the costs are increasing, but I'm not, without the information, it's hard to see if it's really justified.
So we're going with option number two on this one, obviously.
Return with more information.
We just go with option number two on this. Right?
Sure.
Option number two it is.
Excellent.
Item number two.
What am I?
Just your own mic.
Okay, so item number two is residential organics. So we've talked a little bit about this program already. It's known as curbside composting, where you can place food in your yard to be, yard debris bin every week for pickup. And this is available to residential customers who receive an itemized bill. We talked in September about whether or not this program is available to multifamily housing customers. It is currently not. And so those residential customers are single-family up to a fourplex, where customers can be billed individually for the program. It's not available for multifamily housing. Primarily one, because they don't have a yard debris bin at multifamily housing places. Part of that is due to the size of the enclosure, standard enclosures, there's just physically not room for another container for the yard debris bin. We did adopt multifamily standards in the spring, which, so moving forward, looking at those enclosure sizes to ensure that there's appropriate sizing and availability. So in the future, this could be something, because of what we've already passed here and adopted, to have that in the future. But right now, that cost would only be billed to customers who are eligible for the service. So those in multifamily housing would not be charged for a residential organic service that they cannot use. This cost would be about seventy, or seventy cents per month for a customer. We talked in September about the option of having countertop composting bins that we would purchasing giveaway to residents. And the cost on that, if we ordered a thousand containers, it'd be about seventeen dollars each. So seventeen thousand dollars for countertop containers, that would be amortized over the customers who are eligible. So that if we did decide to adopt this program and then also purchase one thousand countertop containers, it would up the monthly cost from seventy cents to a dollar for those eligible customers. So again, all customers eligible to pay for the service would, would be paying for that service, whether or not they want food in their, in their yard debris bin, because the yard debris is picked up weekly. So that is what residential organics is. Lots of cities around the metro region have adopted curbside composting already. So the program is out there and available, and there's lots of good education materials that we can send out as well. Our options here are the same as with the first item. We can, yes, come back, no, we need more info, or not at this time, we would not like to adopt this program.
With that, I'll do the same thing about, uh, public comments on this. And I know the folks have signed up. So those folks who want to testify in favor of curbside composting, you have anyone? We have one in opposition of curbside composting as an optional, as an additional service? Neutral. Right, Council. Special question. Council Hillier and Council President.
I, I just have a clarifying question, please. Last time, I think we had the discussion that people now could at the, at the same rate or plus seven point one or seven point or some percentage more that people will pay for their recycle and yard debris, that you could still put in the, your food waste. And, and it's going to be the kind of the same process, whether we charge people to do that or not. Is that true?
Well, technically, but if it's a citywide program, we would want to make sure that we, that we capture it. And one thing to think about is, sometimes like this time of year, maybe, I don't know, depending with the change of the weather, people don't set out their carts as often. So we anticipate and we built the model that people don't want, you know, food sitting in their yard debris cart for two weeks or whatever. So there would be additional, you know, stops and driver time and set outs, we call them.
But people still could do it without being charged.
Well.
If it's purely yard debris, that's fine. If it's an antipill in the yard debris, that's going to work out too. If all you're putting in there is food scraps, we're going to have to dump that as trash. We wouldn't be able to take it.
Thank you for the clarification.
President Gray.
Yeah, and I think you covered this, but I just want to double, triple check. There is, there's, because it would be too complicated, there's no way to like opt in or opt out of the, of the food by house. It's kind of, it needs to be an all or nothing.
Yeah.
That's right.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry if I missed this, but so you said additional stop. So if, if we add, so like right now, I think our yard debris is picked up every other week. So are you saying that then yard debris is picked, picked up every week? If we opted up every week? So where are the additional stops? So where does the additional stops come in?
So.
Go ahead.
If I'm driving down the street and it's been dry and the grass hasn't grown in two months. One in every four carts is going to be out of the green.
Okay, so it's consumer behavior.
Right.
Okay.
In the winter, we don't gardens.
Thank you.
We don't garden.
Once we implement this program. Consistent.
Yeah. Gotcha, okay. Okay.
A question I had on the fee for it, is it a dollar seventy or it's a dollar? So you have choices of seventy cents or a dollar, it's a dollar, it's not a dollar seventy?
Right, so it's seventy cents without.
Without the bins.
Without the bins.
And then I.
We decided to order bins to get, in addition to adopting the program, it would add up to a dollar to account for the cost of the bins.
And the bins could be branded, like, oh, go ahead. The cities.
But we don't need to, because people could pick up, pick out their own countertop.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But then that bumps the monthly, it bumps the monthly increase then from two twenty-nine per month to three or three twenty-nine.
Yes, for an average thirty-five gallon. So our, your base right now is twenty-nine dollars and twelve cents. Then it, with the proposed rate adjustment, it would go up to thirty-one dollars and forty-one cents. If we added organics with the rate adjustment, it would be thirty-two dollars and eleven cents.
Council Pratt and Council Ray.
Yeah, I think Council Ray is. I was going to ask, I think your question.
So just so I can understand all these individuals as well that are listening, this would be an option that the customer can adopt. So it has to be.
Yes, because, so our carts right now get picked up weekly, right? So because the food scraps would go in the same cart as the yard debris, which is picked up weekly for everyone, we couldn't, they, operationally, correct me if I'm wrong, you couldn't say, oh, you know, you put this food scrap in, but you didn't, but you did, but you did. And then the drivers would have to know who put food scraps in each bin, and so it's.
So that the option is, is the countertop containers, right? Correct? So you could opt not to get a countertop container, but the seventy cents per month per customer would be for everybody. For the program.
Yeah, everybody.
You could add countertop containers on your option, whether you use it or not.
You, the city would have to buy a certain number just to start, right?
It would be if we ordered a thousand, it would add thirty cents a month.
Okay. So, yeah, so, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry. So, we're, we're choosing both of these together, basically, but the seventy cents is required additionally.
Okay. Say, yes, we want this, and we'll go with seventy cents. The big rate, or yes, we want this, and we want a.
It's, you know, it's unfortunate that the countertop thing isn't available for the people in apartments, because a lot of residents, we already use our yard scraps, but that's, you know, there's a space issue. Can you, I know you told us last time, but if we have put the food scraps in with our yard debris, where does that end up, that waste end up, as opposed to if we put it in a regular garbage in the end?
Remember on tour last week where there's.
They're separate with the pumpkins, right?
With the yard waste. So, people would be removing their food scraps, their banana fields, their orange. It would just. It would go to a compost facility.
And if it went in the regular garbage, it just goes to the dump?
Okay, where they take off the gas off the top, right? For heat, yeah, they harvest the gas.
Okay.
So this is in addition to the fees that are increased, are being increased monthly. So that, if it was two dollars and, I don't know, fifty cents, whatever, seventy cents more, or three dollars, basically, seventy cents more a month. Adding a little bit more and more and more.
Major council adopted the rating space or AV rating space, whatever that would be. That was, if we adopted the permit right now, it would
So I, I feel like I need more information. So I, because I really want to think about this a little bit more. And it's just, thank you. Like what other cities similar to our size are doing this? And, and how is that, how many people actually participate on this? I think that was, that's what I'm thinking right now. Or like how many cities, cities within, that is similar to our size of, of population?
Where I live. Like, you know, and Wilsonville.
Thank you. Um, and clearly, I don't take out our bins, and that's why I didn't, because that's my husband's responsibility. But along the lines of what Council Ray is saying, my question was, so, changing consumer behavior. So if we're going to add on this fee, I would want to make sure that people, you know, change their, change their behavior really understood. Otherwise, I feel like we're adding on a fee, and they'll just continue to, to do the same thing what they're doing now. And so with the programs that you have put in place, what does that look like? So we can make sure that we're making positive changes.
So we can make sure that we're making positive changes versus just charging for something again that I, that they might just be doing anyway. Right, so it's. So we would, if we decided to move forward and adopt this now, I got to come back and make a deal again next year or any future. It would require an education campaign to make sure customers know what to go in and what can't. Keep the boxes. Which could go in the yard debris now. And so we would work on, or the public. To make sure that residents were. Wouldn't take that. This. We could do that.
Yeah.
Cottigo was the first and they developed a lot of materials. Started their program and anyway, the council. So I just did that. That's a huge selling point.
It is. Yeah.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I know.
This is reaction number one.
Yeah, well, no, I'm just, I'm just wondering to Counselor Sacco's point like this. I mean, it would be so essential that we have that campaign to reach out to people. Would that be something done by Republic or is this at the city's cost to get that information out or a shared cost?
The joint effort. So the county materials, Republican materials in doing, we can do our own part. The things happen in the county can come out as well. So anything that we have can come out the table and tell people. Materials.
I just, I think along with everyone else feels like this is such a wonderful opportunity, I mean, to really be green and help the city like reduce and recycle. And the idea that we can increase so much things going to, you know, yard debris recycling and, and not just keep going to the landfill. I'm just so incredibly sorry that it's coming at the same time with this immense rate increase for metros coming. So that we even have to have a conversation about this wonderful recycling green program. That would be so great for residents and the city and the planet. You know, to have to even look at a seventy cent increase and be so scared of it in, you know, in in combination with the increase for Metro. It's really difficult. It's really unfortunate.
Cause your option number two or three is your brother.
Option number four, like heartburn and tears. Yeah.
I mean, it sounds to be, and we'll get to Counselor Ray's. What I'm hearing is, I don't know if it's return with more information. I think I'm hearing pumped it for a little while. Because of the rate increase and maybe look into the education campaign. How would that work? Do a little bit more research and maybe bring it back. But Counselor Ray?
Yeah, no, I, I was, I really want to talk to my constituents about this. I don't really want to make another decision that it's going to increase to three dollars and sixty-eight cents to people. So I really want to have my, Maria wants to have the opportunity to bring it to, to people that I know in the community, in community groups and ask and say, here's what's going on. What are your thoughts? Because, I mean, here we are, seven of us making a decision that's going to affect a lot of families and we are not licorice legal. I'm sorry to say that, but we're not. And you know, and the people that are, that are paying or, you know, homeowners, obviously it's different from having licorice legal does not have the multi family units. And I know you won't charge for all that, but still the, the concept, the, the optics of it. It, it's really, I, I really need the time to go out there. That's my personal feeling.
Yeah, the other piece of information I think would be really useful is to compare what this rate would be compared to the other cities. Because I think we're getting really close to Portland rates.
Actually, I did a little of that comparison while we were sitting here. And if the rates are, from what I understand, Portland for twenty gallon, but I think we're only talking about thirty-five gallon, right?
That's what most people have.
Okay, thank you. And Portland is thirty-four ninety. Wilsonville is twenty-seven ninety-five and La Cissego is thirty-four thirty-six.
That's current.
Yes.
So currently are twenty gallons, twenty-four, there's an eight cents, thirty-five, twenty-nine, twelve and sixty-five dollars, thirty-eight.
So you're saying all these other cities are going to go through the same process? Most likely?
Well, I think you said they already had their increases. This was effective January first, twenty twenty-two in the cities that I looked up. And that'll all be impacted.
Much money.
By hearing this, right? Option number three, decline the program option at this time. Come back in the future with a little more research and, not research, but the, the education campaign that would be required, like Counselor Sacco is, is critical.
Yeah.
If you launch the program and like you're saying, no one uses it, then it's a waste of dollars, a dollar someone didn't have to spend. It's not, it's gold.
And possibly Metro, as you mentioned, in year two of these increases, perhaps they'll have more information or they can make adjustments as they're going through these year to year increases. And if they could make a slight reduction on what they're pushing back on you and on the city, then we could take that savings perhaps. And well, you guys could take that savings and then look to, you know, revisiting this. Cause I don't, I think everybody would love to do more recycling. It's a great end result if we can get the participation.
Right.
And get this.
And I think a lot of these will compost in their own yards.
To the future declining adoption this time. How can you, thinking how far out, would you like to give it a year before I come up with a new plan and we talk more about it or three months or?
I mean, we might be able to roll it in. I mean, because we're going to have our council retreat in the first part of the year. So, you know, we have our climate friendly goals. We have our climate action plan. We could talk about it as part of that and then give you, you know, a date when we launch to bring it back. Sound good?
Yeah.
Right. All right. Number three, which I think was people are waiting for.
All right. So our third option for, for conversation is recycle plus. So this is a program spearheaded by Washington County for expanded recycling. So hard to recycle items. Which includes strafy plastic film and bags, clear novel and plastic textiles, batteries, some compact fluorescent light bulbs. And this would be a curbside service. So this one is optional for residents.
Individual residents.
For individual residents to, so if also wanted to move forward, you say, yes, we've adopted this for your resolution. This, customers can now opt into the recycle plus program with Republic. Again, this would be only for single family residential up to a fourplex where customers could be billed individually. And if I wanted to opt into this and my base rate on my Republic bill would be two dollars and fifty cents. Anytime I wanted to make a pickup and this could be every week, this could be every other month. It could be once every six months. I'd call, schedule a pickup, say I'd like to get it picked up. And then I would be charged nine dollars and twenty-five cents on my bill. Up to twelve dollars and two cents. And that is the highest rate, which would be a hundred and fifty feet off the curb. So there's, you know, curbside right in front. And then if you have like a really, really long driveway or something.
That picked up by your.
By your front door, then it would be a little bit extra. For that. Customers who have a disability can get a waiver to have that lower rate of the driver would have to walk to the. So only participating customers would be charged these fees. Again, two fifty base rate to participate in the program. So only if you want to participate and you're eligible. Nine twenty-five, twelve oh two per pickup, which you schedule on your own. You get a littered bin like here in April. And right now, again, it's only available to single family up to fourplex. But Washington County, it looks like they're looking to try to make it available to apartments by next summer and unincorporated. So that is part of the program trajectory to figure out how to make it available to multiple family, how to expand the elements that are picked up.
This where the forums are going to kick in. All right.
Yeah.
So with that, I'll go ahead and open the floor for public comment. Those folks who want to speak in favor of the recycle plus program. Those who are opposed, I have one sign up. Come on up forward and introduce yourselves. You just have to state your name.
Yeah, we need to give her a seat there by the microphone. And thank you for waiting two hours. That was great. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Taylor Lowen. I am the general manager for Ridwell in the Portland area. And thank you for the opportunity to say a few words. I'm here to ask you not to move forward with the proposed recycle plus program and instead pursue an alternate regulatory approach that allows for innovators like Ridwell. As well as the haulers that they so choose to help Walton residents reuse and recycle items. So they're not, that are not part of the curbside recycling program. Ridwell provides a more comprehensive service to all residents, including those in multifamily housing for a similar or lower price than what is being proposed with exclusive hauler program. There's simply no good reason to add this optional service to the franchise system and bar innovators like Ridwell. I want to start by making it clear that Ridwell agrees of many justifications for having a franchise program for garbage and co-mingled recycling services provided to everyone. But that's not the issue with the proposed recycle plus program. Recycle plus is an optional supplemental service that is fundamentally different and the service is currently provided under the franchise contract. Ridwell and franchise haulers peaceably operate side by side in over a hundred jurisdictions across the country. The fact is, Ridwell's not a waste hauler. And, sorry, then it makes no sense to try and pull our sustainability service into the exclusive services provided by the garbage haulers. Our service doesn't use the same trucks or equipment as franchise haulers and recycling services because it just doesn't work. Indeed, there's no overlap between the two types of services. Rather, we provide a specialized convenient service that helps connect residents with organizations that reuse or recycle items that are excluded from general curbside programs. We focus first on reuse, connecting households of local nonprofits like Children's Book Bank and Schoolhouse Supplies, who can reuse what people have sitting around their homes. We also connect residents to specialty recyclers who recycle items that cannot go into co-mingled recycle bins. Currently campaign yard signs. Over twenty thousand households in the Portland area alone have embraced this new service. On the other hand, recycle plus is a step backwards for consumers and the environment. First, recycle plus includes fewer opportunities to reduce waste. Electronics, styrofoam, fluorescent light tubes and prescription pill bottles are not included. And the fixed nature of the franchise system limits expansion to new materials. Second, reusable items are left out of recycle plus entirely, instead of being a core part of the service every other week with Ridwell. Third, recycle plus would cost up to twenty-one dollars a month for a pickup every other week, more than the twelve to sixteen dollars a month for Ridwell's twice, twice a month pickups. Fourth, recycle plus is anything but equitable, leaving out residents in multifamily housing. Ridwell serves everyone. Finally, the hauler program will discourage innovation by needlessly preventing residents from taking advantage of new waste reduction opportunities. In closing, I want to reiterate that Ridwell is happy to participate in the existing regulatory system, our facilities permitted by DEQ and Metro. The Portland City Council unanimously updated their code to clarify that services like ours can operate alongside haulers. And we're currently in discussions with several other nearby cities about simple regulatory approaches to ensure cities have appropriate oversight while still encouraging innovation and new waste reduction ideas. We've appreciated the previous engagement with Tuolton staff and hope the constructed conversation will continue to quickly identify a regulatory approach. Thank you again for your time.
Warn everybody.
We're not used to the clock anymore, yeah? Anyone else who would like to speak, who was opposed to program? All right, moving on to neutral. I have two folks signed up. Lori Kellogg. Go ahead and state your name for the record when she gets situated.
Good evening. My name's Lori Kellogg. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you about recycling in Tuolton. I am in support of the current recycling programs that are available in Tuolton. I live in Kiowa Street. I've been a resident here since nineteen ninety-one. I've always found Tuolton to be a welcoming town in which to live, raise our family. I've appreciated the small town feel while being close to a larger metropolitan community. One of the things that has always impressed me about Tuolton is its commitment to engaging citizens and responding to issues while managing growth. I've been searching for a way for a long time, for a way to recycle items that were going in the garbage. Clamshells was my biggest issue. When I found out about Ridwell, I was thrilled. It's like, couldn't sign up soon enough and they weren't in our area. So when I found that they did come to our area, I signed up right away. I was delighted because they found partner recyclers to handle those clamshell food storage containers, which were not being handled by existing recycling haulers. In addition, I learned of other items they would process for reuse or recycling, such as film, plastic bags, used batteries, light bulbs, used clothing. They also offered bi-monthly specials of other items that do not decompose readily in our landfills. These items have included corks, bread bag tags, old electronics and seasonal items like dead Christmas lights. I don't know the statistics, but I suspect Ridwell has prevented thousands of pounds of items from entering landfills. This has been a tremendous step in the right direction of creating sustainable living for all of us. I understand that Republic Services is seeking to add additional recycling services that would appear to overlap with the work that Ridwell has been doing. I'm in support of healthy competition and commerce and welcome initiatives that might encourage more people to reduce the waste entering landfills. However, I'm not in support of structuring policies or licensing that might inhibit innovation. Ridwell has provided excellent service in recycling where there had been a void and they continue to seek ways to reduce waste. They are currently piloting a recycling of multi-layered plastics such as chip bags, granola wrappers, candy wrappers and lawn and garden bags. This is a further step in reducing our footprint on the environment. Ridwell has also been excellent in communicating with customers about their practices and has been highly responsive when questions are posed. They are helping educate the community about responsible recycling. I encourage council members to please thoughtfully consider ways in which to promote healthy commerce while supporting new businesses to grow and thrive, particularly when it comes to sustainability and protecting the environment.
Thank you. Thank you for waiting two hours.
Oh, and last point, I am wholeheartedly in support of composting by the curb.
Next person I've signed up is Telly, Cherry Renfro.
Hello. Hi, you're welcome. Thanks. I'm Cherry Renfro. I have been living in Tuolton for the last forty years. I've always spoken highly about what a nice place Tuolton is to live, so much so that my three children and five of my grandchildren live here too. As I've grown older, my concern for the environment has grown. I'm constantly trying to find places and companies that recycle or reuse everyday items. I was so happy when Ridwell came to Tuolton and I was able to recycle so many items, clamshells, worn out clothes, books. I also love that they are always adding new items to the list of things that they accept. It seems like for many years now, our garbage haulers have been telling us that they are accepting less and less things to recycle, especially since China stopped taking all of our garbage. What we have learned the hard way was that most of the items we thought were being recycled are in fact landing up in landfills. Ridwell is doing the opposite of all of that. They are finding more and more things we can recycle or reuse and those things. Ridwell is doing the opposite of all of that, they are finding more and more things we can recycle or reuse, and those things are really being recycled and reused. I'm happy to hear that Republic Services would like to add more items if they can recycle. I'm not happy to hear that they want to eliminate other companies that might want to come in and help clean up our environment. Competition is good for everyone, a monopoly like the one Republic Services is proposing is only good for Republic. Oregon is known for being green, yet there's so much more that we can do. Ridwell and other similar companies can help us continue to lead the country in earth-friendly practices. The more people we can get thinking about how to reduce, reuse and recycle, the better for all of us. Please keep the doors open for any and all companies who want to make our community and our country a better place, thanks.
Anyone else would like to present a neutral comment? With that, I'll go ahead and change gears to city council questions, comments, debate. Lindsay and Republic folks to the back up here. I just wanna, I'm gonna go first, sorry here, so we've received lots and lots of emails, it seems the community is on the impression that if the recycle plus program is approved, that Ridwell will no longer be allowed to operate in Tuolumne, is that true, Lindsay?
No.
Thank you.
So what we have been in conversations with Ridwell over a year now, trying to figure out how they could operate in the city under licensure and regulation, and one of the ways that has been discussed in the past is using the Dropbox carveout of our franchise. So they would be a specialty Dropbox service and they could pick up things that Republic was not picking up. So if Republic decided to pick up this stretchy cling film, then that would be something they're picking up. And therefore Ridwell would not be able to pick that up because that would be infringing on our sole franchise hauler. So Ridwell could pick up the things that Republic is not picking up.
But the, yeah, so purpose of recycle plus program is not to create a monopoly, if you will, for Republic. It'll be the only choice for recycling items, correct?
Correct, it is not to create a monopoly, it is an opportunity for the community to have expanded recycling. Multiple services.
I think.
Counselor Pratt and Counselor Hill.
Now I'm confused, so if the recycle plus program, say they recycle clamshells, does that mean that Ridwell can no longer take clamshells?
In the city of Tuolumne, yes, per the franchise agreement as a solid waste hauler, Republic is our franchise solid waste hauler. And so they're the only company permitted to pick up customers.
The items that were designated.
The items that were.
So if, if we have these very environmentally conscious people, then if they want to really do a good job of recycling, they're gonna have to pay for Republic for their clamshells, and then they're gonna have to pay Ridwell because there's a lot of other things that Ridwell takes that Republic doesn't, so that's kind of doubling the cost for a lot of people.
Go ahead. Um, just to differentiate a little bit also. Remember that we are your franchise haulers and and we are regulated and we report to you on everything in our annual report. What we are collecting, where it goes and how much of it there was.
Right.
And we're accountable to you, which is why we come to you to, like we have tonight with Lindsay, to talk about these three different programs or, you know, rate adjustment and two new programs if you like. We're rate regulated also, which is why we came tonight because we have to ask. We're not fighting the program at all, we just make sure that, as you know, I didn't know if you took a tour. We have union drivers that are well, really, really well paid and are loyal to us, as I told you about our 42-year veteran. And that is really important to us, that the people who are servicing you are well compensated and happy in their work. We aren't fighting the, we aren't fighting any other program at all, we're just offering you options as, as we do. Another thing to remember is the Recycling Modernization Act that's coming online with the state is gonna change things. And the last thing I wanted to say is, as you remember from the tour, that the public can drop off things for free at WRI. Well, and New Seasons takes many of these products as well. And I think other stores too, maybe, I'm not sure, I just take mine.
WRI, what does that stand for? You say WRR is taking.
Oh, yeah, well, I'm at resources, it's our transfer station. There's a public area there where people can drop off, you know, batteries and other items, electronics. Extra cardboard, scrap metal. I'm good, covered.
You mentioned a state regulation that it will change things, what does that mean?
582 is, was passed last year, it's been under underway for quite some time and now there's work groups working on different parts of 582. One part is going to create a statewide list of what's recyclable, so that if somebody moves from Joseph to Tuolumne, there will be a basic list, that's the same, like, these are recyclable items that are going to responsible markets. And another part of that is there's a work group called the Truth in Labeling Committee, and they're talking about better ways, you know, it's very confusing for the customer to see chasing arrow. Nobody really knows what the numbers are. So they're working on that, that piece of the legislation to come up with to make it less confusing for the consumer.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
And it's called the Recycling Modernization Act and we can get you information.
Thank you.
Interested.
Yeah, I have a question. With that act, what, does that require haulers and recyclers to expand in any way, the types of things that they pick up?
That they are going.
Yeah, is that part of that?
Um, perhaps. It's what DEQ is looking at is what, what can be responsibly recycled and what, and they're also taking into account what they call lifecycle analysis, so how much, you know, recycling isn't always the answer. Sometimes it's the production of the item, you know, that has a bigger carbon impact than just putting something in the recycling bin would, would offset. So they're taking into account like a whole bunch of models and math and having a lot of meetings about it. So it has yet to be determined what that list will contain or set in stone.
But you don't foresee it adding items that you would be mandated to recycle that would change the basic list of what you guys are taking now? I'm just thinking of potential crossover with Ridwell, or it's kind of too soon to say, okay?
I haven't seen. I got quick one, so I'm confused on the franchise agreement, so say sometime next year, we finally get a city attorney and we make an agreement this reach with Ridwell to be franchising the Dropbox service. How does that impact, you were saying, so if that happens and say with the clamshell example, can both operators collect clamshells or only one can, if they're both franchised?
Right.
I would, I think that that's probably a question for our attorney, I had understood that, that it meant that the Dropbox franchise could include anything that you put in that box. I, that is my understanding, but I, I think we need to talk to the city attorney about that.
Because to me, I don't want to, like you're saying, I don't, residents shouldn't have to have two bins, they have the choice of two people to take, empty their bin, but they shouldn't have to have two bins.
Correct, and this is part of the reason why we had, this whole conversation was on pause because we did not have a city attorney in order to kind of work out what these specifics are. And so right now Ridwell is operating in the city of Tuolumne, we've not issued a cease and desist order to them, so because we believe that residents should be able to have whatever opportunity they can to, to recycle. We, so we have not issued that cease and desist. No.
Okay.
No.
So where I'm at is I hope that Ridwell will continue to work with our city and come to a resolution, but at this time, it sounds like it's kind of an either or. Maybe in the future it won't be, but if we already have a program that people like. Are we putting at risk that people can't, I don't want, I don't want people paying double.
My, my thought, just me, is the third option, decline adoption until.
That's what I'm saying, maybe.
I mean, this is only my opinion, if Ridwell's serious, they will sign on, you know, as one of our providers in a franchise agreement. And then we revisit this, so we can give our community two options.
Yeah, I totally agree because if, if it, you know, three more people recycle because of this program, then it's well worth it.
Yeah, I have, I, where I'm at is, you know, I, I think that all of us need to do everything that we can for our environment and it seems like an either or is not the best thing for our environment, the best thing for our environment is to meet people where they're at and what they feel comfortable with. And I, I think that we continue with, with the option that's on the table, so there is no disruption. And, and maximum opportunity and, but I think having two programs that could work together or even compete would be the optimal, optimal option for our environment. And so that's where, that's where I'm at.
In that option three, is there a way to put some sort of a timeline though in it?
The biggest thing is.
But I'm thinking even after we get an attorney on board, let's say devil's advocate, we can't come to an agreement with Ridwell, I mean, that's not fair. I mean, at some point, if, yeah, then we get our person, if we cannot come to terms. I think we need to put some sort of parameter on it, so it doesn't just drag out forever.
Doesn't a year seem like a reasonable time?
It's.
It's, it's dependent on. Yeah, well, and we'll talk to Barry Elsner about it and get working, get working on it, I mean, for the time being, they're our city attorney and.
And they should be able to knock out an agreement with Ridwell.
I would think six months, I would think six months.
So six months? Revisit.
Oh, I was thinking first quarter of '23, so.
Oh, three months, four months.
So in the next three to six months, revisit this. Once Ridwell signs the franchise agreement, we can bring this back and discuss having two options.
Or if they don't, then that's a whole nother discussion. Yep, and it's a different discussion, but still moving in the right direction.
Got what you need, Lindsay?
Go back, go back in time, so the rate increase, we are looking to have Republic come back at the 28th meeting with a more detailed financial report regarding the rate increase. For the residential organic, we're gonna, for now, and then recycle plus, we will revisit in the first quarter of 2023 and then come back to the table. Excellent, okay, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
And really thank everybody that came to the meeting tonight, I know it's 9:30 and it's a long time to sit for two and a half hours, but it means a lot that you're involved in the community and that you bring your input, so thank you guys for that very much.
So brings us to Irish Movement Consent, we had none, council communications.
I just want to say thank you to the police department again for doing the drug takeback days, they do them twice a year and for residents that aren't aware of those. And do have prescription drugs or vitamins or things like that that need to be disposed of properly so that they are not gone down the toilet or in another scary way for our environment, then there is a Dropbox available Monday through Friday, eight to five at the police department.
Thank you, I actually thought of something that I wanted to mention. And it's, it's something that I've noticed and I'm not sure if we could just ask either the city or possibly the water treatment district that we work with, that just name is Clean Water Services. As part of the wetlands, that's immediately behind the strip mall that's on Nyberg, where they kind of abut each other, the wetlands. The wetlands have been flooding over into that bottom parking lot area and encroaching up on the buildings. But what I've been noticing week after week after week is that water that's rising and coming up, it's washing over the garbage cans, the recycling cans. Parking spots, there's the grease and oil and just all these pollutants that are down there in that strip that are just washed into the wetland there. And it, I mean, the water is up like five, six feet now, and it seems to be a real constant. And I'm not really sure, like, if that's even our jurisdiction or our purview, but it just doesn't seem like it's correct and it just seems like so much gunk is going into that wetland area there that that can't be good for anybody.
We can follow up on that.
Yeah, and I, thanks.
That is part of the core improvements, but it's not gonna help me now.
It's just really, it's just awful, and when you watch the garbage cans flooded and it's just washing into where
I know we've had.
It just can't be right.
A project with the Wetlands Conservancy and Clean Water Services and that's the property owner there, but I don't know the status of it that, that was helping to control the flooding.
Oh, okay, well, that's.
Flood mitigation effort, but I don't know the status of that and I hadn't heard that it was flooding recently, so.
Okay, yeah, I.
I know, it's, if people are working on it, that's great, it's just like, I just noticed it week after week after week and it's just not going down, because it does seasonally any rise all the time, but this just seems like it's consistently been bad for so long.
I call for a German.
He's working on it.